Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Start with your call at District One.
Present.
Three.
Present.
Brian one. Notice of the meeting was properly posted on January twenty first. And Mr. Barnes, I believe is leading this in our prayer and pledge.
Let's pray. Father God, we're getting thankful for the opportunities you give us to serve others. And I lift up Father, the county commissioners, their staffs, the county family. Just help us all to be diligent in our duties and to focus on you and seek you for decisions. Lord, as our country begins a new chapter, pray that leadership will look to you for guidance and will focus, Lord, on what we have in common and not on our differences. Lord, help us to be quick to offer forgiveness to others as you have done through Christ. And your word tells us that man is at his best when he forgives others. Help us to be at our best in you and Father, to look to you. We thank you for this day and we ask these things in the name of Jesus. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, David.
You're welcome. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of January fifteen?
Some. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to approve the claims?
Some. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any? We got a bid.
Good morning. This is a recommendation for P two five nine three zero dash seven. This is the District Three Sidewalk Project. We sent bids to our registered vendors as well as published on multiple online platforms. We received three bids from J Lee Enterprises, Luckinville, and Wyatt Contracting. Based upon final evaluation and feedback from the end users, we are recommending award to the lowest bid, J Lee Enterprises, in the amount of one hundred and fifty seven thousand, five hundred and forty seven dollars and fifty cents.
Is there a motion?
Yep. Move to accept the lowest bid? Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's the P card standard. Is there a motion to approve that?
Some. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any change to the blanket? Is there a motion to approve?
Move the blankets. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any individual consideration on the consent docket?
Move the consent docket. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. District one.
Yes, Commissioners, this is an addendum to our MOU with the District Court for utilization of the court fund. As you recall, one of the categories in there sets aside, I believe it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that Judge Ogden and Renee can use for improvements in the courtrooms. This addendum allows the use of those funds for digital signage. It's an amount of five thousand dollars. And Judge Ogden and Renee are the ones that drafted this, so thank you very much.
If I may point out one thing, Commissioners, this is related to the item that we brought before the board a couple of weeks ago. And at that time, we had thought the cost was going to be a little less and that we would only be needing to ask for about a thousand dollars to complete the project. When it turned out it was a little higher, we have found another way to get those funds without having to ask the county for any monies at all. So this would just reclassify part of what that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is set aside for primarily window treatments, flooring, that kind of thing, to allow us to use it to complete this project without needing to seek any funding from the county. And so there's actually two pages that would need to be signed by the chairman. One is the addendum that Judge Ogden's already signed, and the other one is the page immediately following that is part of the addendum, but that is the change order from Board Audio that we had talked about at the last meeting. So there would be two signatures required, and we would request that you approve this. And thank you so much for that.
Thanks for that. Move the approval? Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jessica.
So number two is what was requested by DA Vicki Behanna for us to add to the agenda for discussion. And they are all here today, so I will open up the mic in regards to this grant.
I know, and we have some other members here that are involved in getting this grant together, Melissa and Madison and Eric in particular. But we're on a short runway here, a short timeframe this grant hit, and we have to have a letter of intent to DOJ or the grant by November, or I'm sorry, February fifth. And then the application for the grant is due February nineteenth. So we've got a short timeframe here, but what I did want to provide to the Commissioners here is the need for a drug court program. And there's much work still to do. And we need to talk to the judges out at juvenile court. But I did watch a presentation that was recently provided by the Oklahoma Bureau of Narcotics and Dangerous Drugs on marijuana impact in Oklahoma. And I brought the PowerPoint presentation on providing, I'm happy to provide it to you all. But what they looked at was a youth use of marijuana. And these statistics are a little bit old. It's twenty one and twenty two, but Oklahoma ranked number three in the nation for youth using marijuana. As you all know, marijuana is a drug that people are using and driving around. It's involved now. People are having DUI charges filed because they're having impaired driving after using marijuana. I'm not going to get into all the science about marijuana usage on a developing brain, but that science is available for you all to use and to review. Because I saw these statistics about how high Oklahoma was in the nation for youth that are using, and that's youth, and I'm talking about twelve years to seventeen years old that are using marijuana. When we saw this grant come out, I was concerned. I got some data from the juvenile division, the US, I'm sorry, the DA's office that's out at the juvenile center. And out of a hundred and fifty four charges that were filed against youth in January so far this year, twenty twenty five, there were a hundred and fifty four charges filed. A hundred and twenty of those were drug-related offenses. Marijuana usage or marijuana possession or some other. So I tell you that because I think the statistics, and we'll have more data as we apply for this grant. I think the statistics will show that there is a great need in Oklahoma County for a drug, a juvenile drug diversion or drug court program here to be able to try to figure out, first of all, why are youth using these drugs? What can we do to try to get them to not use drugs, particularly on a developing brain? So there's a great need for it. This grant is a developmental grant. It's a grant to, for everybody to come together, private and government partners, to try to figure out what this program's going to look like and how it should be developed. That's all the grant is for. It doesn't implement a juvenile drug court program. It's just for us to start talking and developing a program. The federal government will give us, I think it's a million dollars over three years, to develop this program. And then I'm going to let, I just wanted to give you some general information about why we think there's a need for this. And then I'll let, I guess Eric's going to, and Madison are going to talk more in detail about the letter of intent.
Good morning. Eric Moth singer, Assistant District Attorney. Today, we are at the first deadline stage, February fifth, realistically, February third. The applying entity needs to submit a letter of intent. That is not a formal application for the grant. That is not an allocation of resources. That is merely a statement by the applying entity that we are going to pursue and move forward through the grant application process. Between today and February nineteenth, the actual grant application deadline, there is still a lot of work to do. There's a lot of day togetherness to do. There is a lot of discussion with both internal, external partners to do. There is much work to be done, but we are up against a deadline of February fifth and February third where we need to submit this application. And I know some of you had questions and concerns. I think it's probably best if I just answer those as we go.
Comments, questions?
Not denying the need for a program like this or the deadline that's been imposed, but doesn't this require a twenty five percent match from the county?
It would require a twenty five percent match from some entity over three years. So the award for the first year is a hundred thousand dollars. So that would be twenty five percent match, twenty five thousand dollars of the first year, and the remaining two years would be split up. The grant allows in-kind matches from either the applying entity, that would be the county, or from other agencies. That would be the district attorney, that would be the public defender's office. I believe that we can easily obtain agreements, and we can work on that between now and the deadline, to formalize these agreements, easily obtain agreements between partner agencies for that kind of match. Think about the salary potentially of the district attorney or potentially of a public defender who would oversee, develop into these programs. I think we can easily get that. I know that there might also be some county resources available. I obviously can't speak to that, but those matches should be obtainable easily outside of that.
So a couple of questions, if I might. County governments are an eligible entity. State governments are an eligible entity. The establishment of drug courts, I think, per the statute, is done at the judicial court level. Is that correct?
I don't think that that applies to juvenile drug courts. Adult drug courts are certainly governed by Title twenty two. Title ten A.
Ten A.
Does not speak to a juvenile drug court, although unless I'm incorrect. And my, my, I think, Title ten A drugs, does it refer to a juvenile drug court? Not that, not that, yeah, just generally not that we're aware of.
So even, even if it's the case that ten A is different than Title twenty two, state entities are eligible. Why, I'm wondering why the state, the district attorney's office itself isn't the applicant on this?
So if we look at page seven of the grant application, and I have paper copies if anyone needs it, the state entities are defined as the actual states themselves.
Correct.
So the district attorney's office here would not be an eligible entity. The application would have to be done at a statewide level. And that's something that doesn't seem feasible, given the number of local partners that we would like to involve.
Okay, and with regard to those partnerships, if the county is the one that is the grant applicant, then it would be the county that would be entering into those partnerships. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so it would be necessary for the county to be involved in the selection of those partners? And it appears, or at least it sounds like, that some of those have already been thought about? Perhaps discussed?
So that there are, there are obvious candidates for partners. I don't think any final decisions have been made. Internal partners from the county would obviously be the Juvenile Justice Bureau, entities like that.
And JJC is aware of this? The Bureau?
That we have had preliminary.
Ms. Dix is shaking her head, no. Yesterday.
Yes, we did have preliminary.
About the time.
Please, please, again, respectfully, please remember that today, we're just talking about a letter of intent to meet the deadline so we can further these discussions, so that we can come back and prepare the final grant application for the review of this.
Okay, so that being the case, and as you pointed out, the deadlines are the fifth and the nineteenth. I too, like Paul, recognize the need for this type of program. However, I've sat and looked at a number of grants and entities that are applying for grants, and I've come to find that the devil's in the details there. And so as much information as possible, when we actually approve the letter of intent, and then ultimately, the application would be beneficial. So I'm not today prepared to vote to move forward on this.
What information?
I'd like to see the actual detailed application prior to us approving it.
Is that, that prior to approving the final application, the two on the nineteenth, or prior to approving the letter of intent to move forward with the application?
I'd like to see the, the application itself fleshed out prior to approving the letter of intent, yes. And we have a meeting next week, so I, I believe we can make that deadline. But.
And so I agree with Joe, there's a lot to be discussed, especially with potential community partners. A lot to be discussed in regards to what this twenty five percent match looks like. In-kind is an option, but something also to possibly think about that it, and if the Commissioners do choose to move forward and at least more discovery regarding this grant, this opportunity, the opioid abatement settlement might also be an option in order to utilize that for the twenty five percent match. And I would be happy to reach out to our attorneys regarding that. But it was just something that came to mind this morning, if, if you choose to proceed with funding this opportunity. But yes, you're correct, Joe. We fortunately learned about it, you know, yesterday, but if we all work together, and this is the will of the Commissioners to help support this program, we could definitely be able to provide all the information you would need in order to feel comfortable.
Jessica, I'm very appreciative of you working with the DA's office to get this on. Again, I think it, I think it's important, I'd just like more information before we say go forward. Recognizing that it's a hundred thousand dollars initially, then on the backside of that, it's nine hundred thousand dollars, and that twenty five percent match goes up. And I recognize you said that perhaps in-kind, but one of my, my questions is beyond the grant period itself, the initial three-year period, so it, it looks like it's a year to study, two years to implement. Is that correct?
That's potentially accurate, yes.
Okay. And then beyond that, what is the, what is the mechanisms or the way that we're going to continue to fund? And what will it look like as an ongoing expense for all of the agencies that are involved? You would have those projections?
I, I think that's a good question, and I don't think we have those projections today. Most, because we're still in the consideration of the planning. I think that we could provide very general ideas, but as you know, and as Scotty knows, predicting budgets from year to year, predicting costs from year to year can be something that's exceedingly difficult with any accuracy. We can certainly come up with ideas and we can certainly follow with.
Right. So with all federal grants, there's the situation of being asked to, and then also the ability to apply, three points, whether that, you know, we have to apply to the population. And that's always a tendency. If we have the outcomes that we hope to have the outcomes with, we can have general, you know, foundation grants. We could also continue to get state funding, to look through our general partners.
Right. I, I recognize there's opportunities to pursue other grant funding, but in any event, that's not available. What is the potential? And I'm not asking you to give me a definitive cost, but some type of projections as to what the county's ongoing cost might be for the operation.
We can, we can work, we can work that out.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, Madison, did you want to talk?
On emphasize, I, I don't think that there has been conversations about definite partnerships. Obviously, the PD's office and the DA's office are intimately involved in any program like this. And before we pour hundreds of hours of work into writing the application, I think we were hoping to get some buy-in from this body of a commitment to at least exploring this seriously. The turnaround has been really tight. The applica, the notice of funding opportunity came out right after the first of the year, and now it's January twenty third, so we have, there's just not a lot of time. And if we don't do it this year, this won't come available again for a full calendar year. So it's either move quickly or we don't move.
Partnerships have been really defined by the evidence-based practices of the juvenile court, so we're not exploring partnerships that aren't clearly defined by who has to be in that juvenile drug court.
Yes.
Hi, good morning. So first piece of this, the first year of this, this is a planning grant. So part of all of these questions, while we need to have them before we submit a letter of intent for the application, we did kind of start this brainchild yesterday. We had a Zoom yesterday and kind of worked through some of those of what we could identify as potential partners, things like that. Obviously, I have a lot of questions. The judge has a lot of questions, but that's part of this. So the letter of intent, the application, those pieces, we can work out. There is time for us to work that out before we get the letter of intent and the application in. And obviously, you guys would need more information before we go through that process. But just to shed a little bit of light on it, this first year, it's a planning grant. So part of that would be, and again, the monetary piece, I totally understand. We got to have that figured out before we proceed. However, part of that first year is to work out all of those partners, all of those pieces, how it would work. I believe there's a great need in Oklahoma County for this. I, I think it's a good purpose, and I'm really excited about the prospect. Obviously, I have a lot of questions and concerns, but we can work that out. So I just wanted to kind of throw that piece in there also, that the first year of this is a planning grant. So it is to work out all of those pieces. So while the, the need for more information is obviously there before we move to the next step, we don't have to fully have the horse and the cart and the things in the cart figured out before we get there.
Can you go over those dates again with me?
The first step is that the county has to, whoever owns the grant number, like the SAM ID, has to actually go in and turn in what's called an SF four two four. That's just saying we want to initially apply. That has to happen by February fifth, and that really needs to happen forty eight hours before, just so that if there are any issues with that, it gets vetted. And so preferably, we would like to have it done by February third. And then the actual grant application that has like our problem statement, our budget, all of our letters of consideration, all of those like attachments, needs to be done by February nineteenth.
And the notice that this came out December twentieth, is that correct?
I was notified in my email inbox of it after the first of the year.
Again, we can meet all of those deadlines. I, I think Hannah, just finding out at juvenile, and the judge apparently finding out at juvenile yesterday, just showing up on our agenda yesterday. Again, I, I recognize the need. I think it's a wonderful idea. However, I would like more information before we say go forward. And, and so I think, given that what was needed to occur by the January twenty second deadline was that we have a SAM's number, well, we have a SAM's registration number, so we've met that deadline. We have a meeting next week that if you can bring us a more fleshed out program, and I recognize there may be some changes, that we can see what this potentially may have an impact beyond the grant period. I mean, it may get to the point of, at the end of the planning that, for whatever reason, you all decided, we can't go forward. But you may say, we can go forward, and the board may agree. And so then we're looking at nine hundred thousand, twenty five percent match, which we think will be in-kind. And then beyond that, once it starts, we certainly want to stop because I think we're all going to see benefit, and how are we going to fund it? And how are we going to operate it after, after the grant if we don't get additional grant funds? So I'm, I'm not opposed. I'd just like more information.
We're definitely trying to be collaborative, and we have meetings set with all who we think needs to be involved. Is there somebody else in the county we should be working with besides Jessica? I know we don't necessarily have a grant later right now, so is there somebody?
You can, you can certainly copy us all. We just can't reply collectively.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Mr. Washington.
These wonderful folks before me. Have a great, great idea. Because everyone in their right mind knows that today's drug users are tomorrow's county jail detainees and prison populations. While they were discussing this pitch for this help in getting this study started, I had an opportunity to do a little research of my own on this phone matter. Not to hold on, I know I've got three minutes, I definitely don't want to go any longer than that. The percentage of adolescents reporting they used illicit drugs in two thousand and twenty-three continues to hold steadily, even though below the pandemic levels reported in twenty twenty, with ten point nine percent of eighth graders, nineteen point eight of tenth graders, thirty one point two of twelfth graders reportedly, reporting any illicit drug use in the past year. So that would be twenty twenty four, so let me say this right here, time is strength. If these kids are eight, nine years old and twelfth, tenth grade and all this, that means they had to start that before it even got to that point. So again, a study is great, because like I said myself, I've never been a drug user, I've got a history, never. Having been a part of, however, I do have people in my family, and guess what? To help support that, I have young people in my family. That's right, I can't name names because it wouldn't be fair to them. Yes, sir, leave it or not, thirteen, twelve, eight years old today, that's experiencing some kind of crack, let's keep it real. And because of that crack, meth, and stuff like this here, you're going to have mental disorders. So everybody knows that a part of this study has to be, deal with mental disorders as well. So again, I have to strongly support that in that regard. I've never again had a, had a chance, no, a need to deal with that, but let me tell you, a lot of people, and guess what? That emotional instability, that's a very serious thing. And with this study, I guarantee you, if there is help along the way, then I guarantee you, we can put a dip into today's incarcerated rate. Again, like I said, I don't agree much on a lot of the things that the district attorney and I do, but I mean, because that's human. I mean, that's what makes us democracy. I don't care too much about that guy Trump, what he's in, I can't just hate it. A lot, God won't allow me to, but I just want to say that right quick. So again, yes, you know, if y'all can take a study and then get this many information you need to get back and get this thing rolling, that'd be great for us all. And if I can help, let me know with no charge. Thank y'all very much, and I will be back. Thank you.
Is there a motion on this item?
I would move we would defer until the next regularly scheduled meeting of January the twenty ninth.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. District three.
Item twenty one is simply another agreement between Hy-Vee District Three and San Sarah for GPS lead tracking in the amount of nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars.
lead tracking in the amount of $9,384 to carry on through the remainder of this fiscal year.
You moving it?
I'll second. Did you move it, Paul? All right. There we go.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Home Finance Authority, I see counsel's present. You wish to address this item? Sorry for your delay, sir.
No worries. Thank you, commissioners. As part of the Home Finance Authority's ongoing first-time home buyer programs, we offer what's called a mortgage credit certificate program. And that program is good for two fiscal years. Our authorization expired at the end of 2024. So we applied and received some additional volume cap from the state, and we would like to elect to convert that to mortgage credit certificates. Mortgage credit certificate is really good for those that are on the bubble, of being able to qualify for a mortgage. So the mortgage credit certificate, the underwriters of a single-family home can take that credit into account for their income and then what they don't get in a credit, they can continue to deduct the mortgage, regular mortgage interest deduction. I've got David Faisal, the executive director of OCHFA, is sitting back there too. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there a motion?
I don't have any questions. Move approval, I'm glad to see we're doing this again.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Jared?
Thank you.
Any commissioner comments?
None.
New business? Mr. Washington, you wish to address again?
Well, as y'all know, I esteemed CEO of Oklahoma County Detention Center has decided to move on. There's gonna be a void needed to be filled here. Guess what? Believe it or not, Michael has decided to run for that office, not necessarily run, but be appointed. And you want to know why? Because I think I have the substance to give to this Oklahoma County Detention Center. Let me say it like this. I, without question, I think they, everyone can determine with my involvement in my community activism, that I'm very sincere and compassionate about freedom, justice, and equality. That's never been a question wrong. No one today can abuse their child or loved one in my face without hearing from me. I don't care what color y'all, what you live from, what, how much money you got. Because that's the God in me, the God that gave me my life. Okay, now, and to raise it from my mother. Now then, I believe if somebody like myself was appointed to this position, who is to say that because I'm not per se into have a degree in criminalology of whatever it takes necessary to run an agency? I guess what? Common sense rules the nation. I know the needs of those who are incarcerated. I know the needs of those who are working there, who are going to at some time get up on the bad side of the road sometime, you know, didn't get a good night's sleep or whatever. So I would bring stability to that position. I would bring reliability to that position. I would bring accountability to that position. And I would be a hand-on CEO on a daily basis. And not any of my officers or employees is just going to say, hey, this is what we found out. No, let's sit down and let me see where the results came from. I'm saying that because a lot of us get misled because we rely too much on our subordinates. And we need to do a little bit better than that. But me again, you know, people say, oh, man, now why would this guy come up and make a statement like that? It shows you the love and compassion and concern that I have for every human being, the safety of alphas, the safety of inmates, the safety of, of healthcare workers, anybody that works around us. And if you just start, now that's a lot of programs going on, I got to admit. But I just think you had an individualized program instituted, like one-on-one. Sit down with this inmate who may have a mother who's died, or auntie who's got cancer, whatever. Now then, so you need to screen those people carefully and not to have them in with the general population then. Okay? Because in so doing, then he's got, that person's going to take off on that other person. And I tell you what, if I'm saying, because I thought it was last time, and then the next person not, and you put two people in the same cell together like that, you're going to get on one another's nerves regardless, the center to fall and insane. Okay? I, again, am not going to empower, empower my employees based upon somebody's recommendation. I'm just thinking something closer now. I will take the opportunity and take advantage of being a hands-on CEO, have investigators on the market, and guess what? Now, first of all, let me see, let me see, Mr. Man, how do I get, who do I need to, like write a letter of intent to? Y'all or the county commissioners? I mean, excuse me, the Oklahoma County Jail Trust?
Jail Trust.
Yeah. I'm going to do, I, I see it kind of loud when I say it, but I'm serious, man. I mean, I'm just serious. You know what I mean? I just love, I mean, yeah, I can, I'm a good candidate like everybody. Thank y'all very much, man, and I'm going now. Have a great day, thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Thanks.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye. Everybody in? I'll call the PBA together. All three districts are present. Notice that the meeting was properly posted January 21st. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of January 15?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion? Somebody get caught up. Is there a motion to approve the claims?
Motion approved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any citizen participation, board minutes, or new business? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.